You are watching XS Laporte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is the June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four meeting of the Laporte County Plan Commission. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaportecounty.org.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Laporte County Plan Commission, meeting for Thursday, June twenty fifth at six P M. Twenty twenty four. After the pledge of allegiance, if you would all remain standing for a brief moment of silence, please for following lacrosse firefighter Ken Caldwell. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, united in the world.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Joe Heaney.
Present.
Harold Parker.
Present.
Tony Hendricks.
Here.
Rita Beauty.
Here.
Earl Cunningham.
Present.
John Carr.
Here.
Deb Vance.
Here.
John Watson.
Here.
Eric Pointon.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's uh, we have a consider our agenda.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Motion to second approve the agenda. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Very good. Alright, next we have a consideration of the approval of the minutes from May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four.
Motion to approve the minutes.
I second it.
A motion to second approve the minutes. Any comments?
Outstanding job as always. Appreciate it. The minutes are always very complete.
Very good. Thank you. Alright, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Alright, uh, we don't have any petitions before us this evening. Um, I don't think, do we have any old business to consider? I don't uh, I don't think so. Alright, very good. Then we're moving right on to new business. Uh, number one, review and update of this solar ordinance draft. Um, I know attorney BG emailed, uh, emailed this out, uh, several days ago. Hopefully everybody's had a chance to take a look at it. These are some of the things that, changes that the solar committee, uh, came up with as well as suggestions from our attorney and, uh, and our county planner Mitch Bishop as well. Um, I think they made a pretty good collaborative effort. Um, I'll, uh, open the floor up to anybody here on the board who, uh, has any, uh, comments or, uh, anything they'd like to, uh, discuss.
We're just looking at Doug for legal guidance on how we proceed.
Well, if, if, if the commission is content with the language, the next, next step would be to instruct me to proceed because I need finalization language before we go forward. Uh, there is a typo in here and I'll repair that. I called S C S A C Ms or something like that, but I got fix that easily. So the next step would be set a date for a public hearing on, on the solar ordinance and the language. And then instruct me to do the notices, the, the legal notices by mail and we'll do the publication by paper. And the next step would be having a public hearing. Um, after the close of the public hearing, then the commission can take a vote or make changes or amendments, but, uh, I, I need to know if the commissions are good with the language and the changes we have. And if so, and by the way, much of the changes we have here, uh, the things that we add, we're adding, those are included in the conditions in front of the book, barit zoning appeals for that grant. Okay? Um, so we got two and a half pages of the conditions and many of them were included here just for your information. Okay? And so I, I just need a go, or if you want to change anything, let me know what the changes are, and then I can get to work on getting it noticed up and set for public hearing.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Parker.
On the front page on the last whereas, the last sentence in it, uh, I understand this to, to get up to solar, solar smart gold status, but after that, I don't know why the rest of that sentence is there. This is a legal document and it's going to be in there forever. We don't need to.
Oh, it was there first draft. That's why it's there now. It was not added. That's what we had first time, first pass.
That's, it caught me wrong about.
Okay.
Well, the things there, that's.
Whatever you folks want me to do.
Oh, right, starting here.
What do you wanna, you wanna take out letting?
Yeah, I just think you need a period after the status. I mean, what's the rest of that sentence do for anything?
Nothing.
Nothing.
So just take it out? Second.
Now we have to vote on every change? Okay.
Okay, I suppose we could just suggest these as we go along and then make a motion at the end to change.
Yeah, to adopt, yeah.
Yeah, unless anybody opposes any of them as we go along here just to, um, so we're not voting a bunch of times here.
Right, other than that, I mean, I guess.
We bounced around for a while, the percent of ground is gonna be actually put into solar in Laporte County. I never saw anything about that. Is that in there?
There's nothing in here, and you and I had a conversation about this, and I'm not sure to, if, if the elected officials want to go that way, I'm not sure the solar ordinance is the place. I think that would be an adoption by the county commissioners. Because it's kind of a different issue, alright? On the solar, it's more mechanical. You can go this high or you can have this much buffer space. But when you say the percentage of acres in the county that can be converted to solar, that's more of a policy issue. And I would rather see the commissioners tackle that subject because if there's an appeal of that, and there might likely be an appeal of that, that's a constitutional issue, and I'd rather not mix those two issues with this ordinance.
Okay, I agree with that.
On page two at the bottom, I just want to make sure I'm right. Um, uh, the last couple paragraphs there, small scale and large scale, we're changing that from fifty thousand square feet to four thousand square feet. Is that correct?
Yes. That's why I had my notes. What's?
Page two, the.
What, what's that? And, and that was, I'm glad you mentioned that, uh, Councilman Cunningham. Um, was that supposed to maybe drop down to forty five thousand?
Well, I could have had, I could have had a mistake in my notes. I think part of the intention was to, to reduce, to, to, um, bring the level for a SES down to a lower acreage, so there would be some more control, and it would flat fall into those SES categories, okay?
Yeah.
Close to an acre.
That, that just seems like a tremendous.
It's forty five thousand instead of four hundred and fifty thousand, right? I think, I think so.
Yeah, because that's just all.
Okay, so the bloodline only goes through the zero.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So forty five thousand, I can live with that. I just thought that was an extremely high drop. Are we all in agreement then? That's forty five thousand? Instead of.
Yeah, that's coming from the committee.
I have my notes, but I think that's correct.
I'm fine with that. I just thought that was too drastic.
So what was it originally?
Fifty.
Yeah, I think it was fifty thousand.
When I read the revision here, I thought it went from fifty to four thousand.
So it's going from.
But it's just going fifty to forty five. That makes a difference.
Not much when it's forty five to fifty.
Something less than an acre. That's just, yeah, just over an acre.
Yeah, but I know there's discussion in regards to like roof, rooftop solar, uh, like on a roof, forty five thousand square foot really isn't that large for a rooftop solar unit.
That's, this is ground mounted.
Oh, you're saying they're bigger than that?
But this is.
This says ground mounted on this one though.
Right, doesn't say rooftop.
Yeah, ground mounted, okay.
We didn't discuss that.
So the way this is written, John, for a roof mounted, it's basically the size of the building, so we're not putting a, 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 a limitation on square feet, as long as it doesn't go beyond the building roof.
Yes, it's up here above there.
Mr. President.
Yes.
On page four, uh, we, I've already discussed this with the attorney, but to get it on the record and because it's not on the copies that you have, uh, page four, number six, under all required agency comments approvals, along with respective ordinance conformance, um, we are adding at the end and Laporte County MS four and corresponding SWIP. Uh, the SWIP stands for Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan.
One more time, real slow. That's a lot of meat to put in there.
We are ending the Laporte County MS four and corresponding SWIP. A SWIP is a document that is a stormwater pollution prevention plan. That is our suggested add to number six on page four.
That's number ten under that six? Or you're just adding that into the paragraph of six?
We're just adding that to the end of the paragraph.
Gotcha, okay. I like the additions on page five of, uh, N and O. Both those are improvements, I believe.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Are yours colored coded? Okay. Yeah, yours is red, mine's, mine's in blue.
I don't know why it's different.
That's the way it has to be, six feet. But where's the, the? Where's the six feet?
So just for the public as we're continuing going through this, the N and the O that, uh, Councilman Cunningham referred to is, uh, the building commissioner has the authority to inspect, uh, any of the solar structures once every five years. Expect, it spends the owner of the SES as well as, uh, transfer a notification that any holder of an SES system must notify the, uh, building commissioner of any, uh, sale or change in ownership.
And it, on, on that last, uh, on the change ownership is present. We gotta white, watch how we write it in the solar ordinance to make sure that we're legal and we're constitutional. However, in blue stamp, for example, a special exception. Jeez, a special exception generally applies to the owner. Okay, so the function at the B Z A level will force a special re- exception petition, so the B Z A has an opportunity to look over and approve who the UNU owner would be. Because remember, we've got these bonding requirements, we've got to pay in on the bonding requirements, so I, I tried to make the process to ensure that somebody in the B Z A, I think is a proper entity to look at, would make sure that the new company has a financial airwell to satisfy all the requirements from the original grant. Okay?
Correct. Thank you.
Page seven, uh, number, uh, actually it's letter F. Just correct the spelling on approved.
Oh, yeah, please disregard all the typos. We hit all those. Uh, my assistant thought, uh, spell check works with the, uh, edits and it doesn't. So that's how we, why we have so many typos, but we'll have all those fixed. Actually, we already do, Ashley went through it.
So number F was screening buffering, uh, and the SES being required for any directly adjacent or, uh, next to any, uh, roadways, residential structures placing a natural screening as approved by the B Z A. On the next page, there's a lot of changes, uh, on here as far as fencing buffers, emergency contact signage, drainage infrastructure, repair of damage, um, gives timelines as well as, uh, some, uh, concerns as to electrical interference and continues on, um, multiple new ones as far as, uh, addressing issues related to glare, um, the depth of, uh, items when they're buried, waste management, uh, disposals, uh, agreements, um, such as road use and repair agreements, decommissioning plans and setbacks, um, having to be agreed upon, uh, additionally by the county commissioners, uh, prior to any permits being issued for a facility. Uh, it's the pages worth of changes here and, um, let everybody.
Yeah, and, and I might say most of those ads are from the committee, also from our county planner, and Purdue did a really good study on all of the solar ordinances in the state, and they did like a kind of a graph, okay? And so some of these were missing from our first draft, which that's our first draft, just not uncommon. We had, we had a fair little work on when we did the first draft, so that's, that's where some of these other are coming from. The language I pulled from the sections of the Indiana code that we didn't include in here. Okay?
Again, I think I speak for the board. I, I think those improvements are all what we wanted.
I agree.
Mr. President.
Yes.
The sections that Earl was just referring to, we have, the term C S E systems as mentioned, and we need to probably clarify that that's commercial solar energy. Discuss that with the attorney, just not on your copy, so that'd be another minor change.
So what's that mean? We're giving somebody a name?
Uh, yeah, it, we're, in, in this, in the changes, we have a reference to C S E systems, but we wanna make sure that that's spelled out as.
It's defined.
Commercial, yeah, defined.
Yeah.
Defined, is that another legal entity that we're dealing with or?
No, no, we, we, a commercial, we want to make a distinction between residential, okay, and a solar farm, basically, and the C S E is, is basically solar farm, and we want some more restrictions on those. Restrictions that aren't practical for res- residential application.
Well, that's something we're doing.
Pardon?
That's what we're putting.
That's, yeah, that, that's included in the ads. I just need to set it out and define it better, that's.
And one last thing is the two hundred and fifty foot setback. We need to define from what? That from non-participating residences?
That's what I believe it said in there was the non-participating, yes.
Yeah, I think that was the intention of it.
That's all I have.
So, so for some of this, and I know that this was, uh, something that, um, we've talked about as far as, um, distances, um, so, you know, let's say somebody's, uh, house is two hundred and fifty feet from the back of their property line. Um, do we, we don't necessarily want that coming directly up to the edge of their property line. I, I know we had talked back and forth a few times with, with some folks and, um, I think, I think the general consensus was we can kind of flesh this out here now, uh, at least solar committee anyway, as we, um, expand this out now to the full board, um, maybe two hundred and fifty feet from the property line of adjacent, of, of adjacent property owners makes that a little, might be a little, uh, a little plainer as well, so then that way you don't have an issue where, um, you know, there's vacant lots or something. If there's not a house there, then, you know, they go right to the edge of the property line, something along those lines, so that way you've got a more distinct barrier as opposed to, you know, where for residences, let's say.
It cannot go up to the property line anyways. It has to adhere to the accessory structure setbacks of that zoning, so if it's ag, it has to be at least thirty feet from the sideline and fifty from the rear. They can't go up to the property line no matter what.
Okay.
All right, if I might add, Mr. President, the Indiana, the new Indiana stature that came out measured from the wall of the structure, which I, I, I really didn't like that. I don't think, I think it's unclear, and I think it's much clearer to, to run it as a setback, like we run all the other setbacks in the county. There are the measure from somebody's garage. Okay, so that, that is, that is where we are varying from the Indiana code, but I think this is much more clear and easier to administer.
Okay. Does that sound good?
I'm still, I, I still need clarification as to.
So, so two hundred, so the setback would be from the property line of a non-participating property owner?
Yes.
Then obviously participating, they sign off on it.
Non-participating, yes, that is.
Okay, gotcha. We're good. Thank you.
Oh, we see non-participating owner instead of resident. That gives them some protection. If they have an empty lot, they later build a house on the lot.
Yes.
Right? I think that's way better.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
I say we had some catastrophic thing happen, and the outfit can't rebuild or can't come off it for some reason or another. How do we, uh, turn it back into agriculture? If they put it through bankruptcy court, the bank, the judge will have, but, uh, I am talking from a guy in Texas who was telling me that they had a catastrophe, hailstorm that ruined it, and then outfit come in and bought the old stuff up, but they wanted to renegotiate all the contracts and slice them in half, in fact, so.
We're not gonna have any authority about what, what a bankruptcy court's gonna do.
Or, I don't know if it's bankrupt or if somebody else just come in and bought the field.
Well, that's not gonna happen unless, unless the B Z A approves it.
Right. Yeah.
Okay, and I, in a big, well, I can't speak for what they're going to do, but I can't see how they would. The, the decommissioning agreement is with the county commissioners in the county, okay? So the B Z A is looking at whether it's appropriate to build and they're following all the regulations. But there's a written contract with the county commissioners, period, to pay for this, and if there's a catastrophic, catastrophic failure or deconstruction, okay? So that money's there.
Okay. The money is there, so we got it. Yeah, yeah, until the end.
Few minutes here, anybody, uh, while we're going through here, any other, uh, questions or suggestions, additions, changes?
I think it looks good.
I'd like to commend the, uh, committee.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We, we, we all worked pretty hard on it. We had quite a few meetings and, um, I think, I think everybody did a lot of, yeah, yeah, a lot of time and effort, and I think, uh, I think it shows off. I appreciate that. Thank you. I know.
Thank you to Attorney B G for all his hard work on it.
Yes, absolutely, and, and, and our county planner Mitch Bishop.
Absolutely.
Well, we're absolutely invaluable. There's a couple of those I hadn't thought of either, so thank you. And obviously the input we got from the public as well, and at the various listening sessions that we had as well. I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the changes presented.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion, a second to move forward with the changes as they, as they've been presented. Do we have any discussion?
Do we need to make the motion to have, to include for Doug to go ahead and move forward with everything that we've suggested for the public hearing and to.
Set a date.
Yeah, set the date and to set up the, in the newspapers and everything like that.
You want to include that in this motion or a second?
Or at least setting a date. I mean, uh, all the requirements are statutory, so I have to go through all of them anyway. So I just need, uh, authorization to proceed and a date.
And that's what the motion is correct?
I was to just vote on the changes and then give me another motion, motion to do that.
Okay. Alright, very good then. In that case, we'll call.
I have a, a real quick question.
Yes.
And I may not go in this, I don't know, but I, I have a question about transmission lines. Um, so the transmission lines that are gonna hook to a main power source, I, I guess I just don't want to see high line towers or something go across an adjoining property line that would, um, say that guy has an irrigation in that field or possibly potentially in the future would have an irrigator in that field. That would be a limiting factor.
Well, if, if you're talking about going to outside of the leased property.
Correct.
They, they don't have any right to do that anyway. They're gonna have to negotiate some type of easement with that adjoining property owner. As far as controlling the types of lines, I don't know how, I don't think we can do that in ordinance because there's such a variety of what they may be putting up.
Yeah, I don't think so. I mean, I didn't know. I mean, I know they added those one, those new ones coming on New Carlyle a few years ago, um, so if that's what they're tying into, like, those went across all these properties. I don't want to see that.
Well, we cannot infringe upon any private rights, okay?
Right.
So there may or may not be existing easements.
Okay.
Alright, so if there's an existing easement, we can't pass an ordinance that's gonna affect that existing easement. If there's not an easement, then they're gonna have to negotiate with the property owner to, to do what they're gonna do, and I'll, I'm assuming compensate them.
Right.
Well, four years ago, they went and put another line right next to a Nippsco line all the way through Plymouth, all the way to New York, so.
We can't do anything about that, not.
Well, Indiana has no laws against that, so they can build, if they prove a need, they can put an eye line wherever they need it.
Yeah, and they can't, you gave an eminent domain, arguably, okay? At the zoning level, I don't think we can.
I didn't think we could do it. I just had a question how that worked.
No, it's a good point, but I don't think we, anything we do here, I don't think would be enforceable.
They have a whole side on the, on the towers over there.
Yeah, a lot of this land runs under, uh, the existing, uh, high tension lines that come right through that area anyway. Yeah. Alright, uh, any other questions? Alright, now, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, um, are we, for statutorily, how many, what's the, uh, advertisement date? Is it ten days for a public hearing?
I, I think so. I gotta double check it, okay? I, I need at least thirty to sixty, thirty or sixty days. I prefer sixty days because I gotta get mail cards back. I gotta sort of pay mail out. Okay, so I would prefer sixty days, maybe the next, uh, commission meeting that.
Make a motion that we, um, allow our attorney to move forward following all of statutory requirements.
Second. We need to add.
Requirements in further, with a tentative date of the next, uh, scheduled plan commission meeting, do you think?
August meeting?
You want it August? I think, I think we'd be safer in August because I'm concerned.
August.
You know, the, the, the agenda from April for the plan commission, just cut that last week in the mail. Okay, so. No, no, I'm not criticizing you. She mailed it on time, uh, but I, I want a lot more time to get the certified mail cards back in the mail. That's all. So I would prefer, yes, the August meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Is it all good with that? Okay, so we have a motion in a sec, and did we have a second? I'm sorry, I missed it. Second, okay.
Did you put the August one in the motion? Who, you put the motion?
Yeah, we can add that, that's not.
Add that.
Just.
Okay, alright, very good. Um, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, thank you. Um, uh, do we have any more, uh, discussion on this before we move on to the, uh, onto our last item or does that cover everything for everyone tonight?
That's all we had on the agenda, wasn't it?
Well, no, we have one more item, but I mean, on, under the, uh, solar ordinance, uh, draft, um, was there anything else anybody wanted to cover on that? I think we're probably good, but I just wanted to double check before we move on. Alright, uh, the next then, number two, uh, our last item on here for tonight would be, uh, the review of a large scale solar ordinance moratorium draft.
Mr. President, so we're looking at, again, we're looking at Doug, that this has to follow the same procedure. Same thing. We, we instruct you to potentially put this on the oxygen.
Well, I, I've only got two cases to rely on, and they both say we should just follow the same procedure as we would in passing, uh, a zoning ordinance. So that's the position, I think that's the safest position, position to take in, in the event it's challenged.
Right, that, that, that makes sense. Um, it's obviously the pleasure of the board here tonight, what to do with this. Um, considering we had a nine to zero, um, unanimous vote here on the, um, on the updates, uh, to the solar ordinance, it seems like there's a highly likelihood that that, uh, will be adopted and passed, I would think, in, in August. Uh, at the same time, if you want to continue on the same dual track, uh, just in case something comes up between now and then, um, and, you know, still consider going down the path of a, of a moratorium, so we have both options available to us in August, um, that's obviously the pleasure of the board, so it's, it's one of those, whatever, whatever you guys are thinking and feeling type of thing, and, uh, Mr. BG has something.
If I may add, yeah, just like we just passed, the, the B Z A just passed, um, the grant on their current application, we have so many conditions on that, it essentially includes our revised solar norms, so nothing is getting through without the B Z A's review, and the B Z A's taking the possession, nothing's getting out, uh, through without the conditions, okay? So just so you know, it's, nobody's gonna get anything, slide anything through or, or, or it's that, it's not even a risk, frankly.
So you're trying to set a, uh, dates on how long the moratorium is?
No, 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 my, no, my point, my, my point was if, since we, um, we're all unanimously, uh, agree that we like the changes and we're moving forward with the ordinance update, do we need to do, do we need to continue down the dual path right now, or do you want to have that as a backup option for August, just in case something happens between now? Or do you want to have that as a backup option for August, just in case something happens between now and then it's noticed anyway when the notice goes out for the solar ordinance? It's, it's, whatever the pleasure is here, it's one of those where I, we initially started down a path of trying to do both at once. That way if we ran into trouble with the ordinance, we still had the moratorium option until we could get done with the ordinance. But it seems like if we're got a good solid ordinance here, then do we still need to continue down the dual track? And again, it's, it's the.
And I feel like since we have that agreement on the changes, of course, we're going to have the public hearing. But we also have the conditions, you know, to me, I just think that this might be something that we don't need to pursue, since we have that already laid out.
My position is just the opposite, that it's, it's just like an insurance plan. Between now and then, something comes up and we can't pass what we just agreed on. Then we still have the option of the moratorium.
But we also have already conditions in place with the one we have, so we, we already are still looking at the same thing when it comes to the BZA. You know, so.
I make a motion that we go dual track.
I'll second that.
Motion second for the dual track. This, this, this again, isn't, this is giving us the option to be able to legally adopt one if we needed to in August. And then from there, we'd have to go to the commissioners and be ratified at, right, one of the meetings after that, so. Yeah, I don't know if there's any other discussion or anything before, before I call a question, but just. All right, hearing, no further discretion. Motion is continue on the dual, dual path here and also notice out for a possible solar moratorium. At the August meeting for consideration of that. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
Certainly.
Joe Haney?
Aye.
Harold Parker?
Aye.
Tony Hendricks?
Aye.
Rita Beatty?
Aye.
Earl Cunningham?
Aye.
John Carr?
Aye.
Deb Vance?
Nay.
John Watson?
Aye.
Eric Pointon?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
All right, thank you.
That meeting's August twenty-seventh?
Yes.
You're not calling. Where are you, Tony?
Just for the public to know.
All right, very good. We have anything else before us here this evening, anything else to consider? I'd like to give a congratulations to our, to our secretary, Ashley, for her nomination for woman of the year. And I hope, I hope you get. Entertain a motion to adjourn if there's nothing else.
Motion.
I second it.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.